Call the meeting to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Guess I have to vote. Okay, review and approve the minutes from May 5th, 2023, Special Select Board Meeting regarding the dog bite. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May 8th, 2023, regular Select Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Any open public comment?
Yes. I'd like to really know what's going on here in this town. We've still got the Palos, nothing been done. I think we've spent more time on law than do anything else. And the Palos have been there for the last summer. And I'm kind of concerned the way they just, they don't shrink. They get bigger and bigger and bigger. And they're all over this town. And I think, I think I brought it up at the last meeting. And also, I mean, we've been looking into some things and we're finding out these employees of the town, all right, both work eight hours, all right? And they're only working seven. I'd like to have the board look into this.
Whatever, six thirty?
Yes, uh, six thirty.
Because that's if you add it all up, that's $24,000 a year.
So who, who do you, why do you say they have to work seven? Or they work only seven in their store?
Well, they're getting paid for eight. If you figure it out.
Well, they might get paid.
They're getting paid for the lunch hour.
Right.
They're getting paid for all this stuff. That's $24,000 a year if we start figuring it out.
That's pretty common with municipalities. They get paid for lunches. They work through lunch and they get paid for it.
And also another thing, I want you to take the highway budget and divide it by 22 miles, all right? And find out per mile it costs from the town to property. It's unreal. Really, it's unreal. The town taxpayers won't believe it from miles it costs from town to property. And there's no other town in Rattling County is spending that kind of money per mile.
Okay, we'll check into it.
And I think I haven't answered by the next meeting. And also, the Field Street gate should be closed. We put the gate up for a reason.
What gate?
Field Street. Well, I think I've brought it up a number of times, but it's still wide open. It's open, I mean, people can drive right in there. And that's a drinking lot. And when it takes a second, we're closed it.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right, bills are signed. Everybody reviewed and signed those?
Yep.
Animal Control Ordinance Amendments Resolution. So we've gone through the animal ordinance and I'm going to read what the changes were to the ordinance. So on the first page, Section G, there was a change in potentially vicious dog. Means a dog that while running at large inflicts minor injuries on a person not necessitating medical attention, chases, worries, threatens to attack or attacks another domestic pet or domestic animal. Causes damage to personal or real property, chases a person or causes any person to reasonably fear attack or bodily injury from such dog. This definition shall not apply if the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic pet or animal or person from attack or assault, or the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog. Page two, nuisance, under nuisances, nuisance number six, potentially vicious dog. A dog that while running at large inflicts minor injuries on a person not necessitating medical attention, chases, worries, threatens to attack or attacks another domestic pet or domestic animal. Causes damage to personal or real property, chases a person or causes any person to reasonably fear or bodily injury from such dog. This definition shall not apply if the dog was protecting or defending itself, its offspring, another domestic pet or animal or a person from attack or assault, or the person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injury, or otherwise provoking the dog. Page four, for fines under potentially vicious dog. First offense, a warning or impoundment and/or $100 fine. Second offense, impoundment and/or $300 fine. Third offense, impoundment and/or $500 fine. And those were the three changes made. And I think the biggest change, I believe, was the fact that we added animals to it. It was, it always just kind of spoke to people and not other animals being attacked. So that was kind of the big change, so. Does anybody have any questions or changes or?
The question I want to ask, how does the health officer, how does the segment this town? That ordinance, they have, we have the ordinance too. Does it mean nothing? I can tell you, doesn't mean a thing.
Well, it's in place, so it gives us the opportunity to find people and to contain their animals and.
But if there's been.
Well, I know, but we do have the sheriff's department with that. We'll go and take them if it gets to the point. And we've had it done before in Proctor, so. So it's worked to some degree.
Well, she'll be at the health officer.
Well, the health officer isn't the one who goes and impounds them and takes the dog away.
No, I did.
Well, it's our animal officer who is the sheriff's department. So may have changed since you were here. Is there a motion to amend the Animal Control Ordinance to define the phrase potentially vicious dogs and outline penalties for violations? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the ordinance is amended as read.
I'll get notices out.
Thank you. Okay, Personnel Policy Amendments, second review. Are these highlighted to you?
Uh, no, you don't really need to read the policy since it's just a.
Okay, I didn't know if you had.
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Since it's just a staff change.
All right. So basically, the last time we met, you went over the personnel policy again. So is there a motion to approve the amendments to the personnel policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personal policy is approved. All right. Next is Public Nuisance Ordinance Amendment. Second review of the district with conditions for keeping certain animal as proposed at the special town meeting. So this is in regards to the chickens.
Yeah, I hope that map makes sense. I didn't give the RRPC, the Rattling Regional Planning Commission, more work to do. So what I did is just downloaded the PDF, put yellow lines in it and tried to, tried to exclude the, what looked to be agricultural areas.
Okay. So because at the special meeting we had, because I know some of you were there, we had talked about separating village from, you know, outside where there are families and things like that. So put together this map. So.
Makes sense, from what?
Yeah, and once the, once the Select Board decides on how we want to handle moving forward, if we do want to have a, we don't have another meeting for another three weeks. So if you did want to have an informational meeting, I can get the word out on front porch forum and I'm sure it'll circulate around Facebook eventually. But yeah, that's to, that's up to the board's discretion.
So is there a consensus to hold a public comment session? I don't know if we need it in May if it asks. I mean, our next meeting is what, June 12th?
Yeah, and then Monday's a holiday.
Right.
June 12th seems fine to me.
Just to hold the special meeting on the same day as our board meeting? Okay.
Sure.
All right. So June 12th. Get the word out. Okay. All right, Public Works Week and Employee Recognition. Is there a consensus to award DPW half a day on Friday following an appreciation lunch?
Sure.
Anybody agrees? Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
And I didn't add it, but Nick Geneva got an incredible review by Mr. Bludworth.
Yeah.
And Nick gave a tour to a student down at the wastewater and water treatment plant, and it sounded like it went really well. And it's, it's just exciting to me that, that there are still students out there that might be interested in work like that.
Right.
So.
No, it was a really nice letter.
Yeah.
And I think the fact that he went to the, because people today don't appreciate and recommend people for doing a good job. They just, but for him to write that letter and tell us, I think that's great.
Yeah, it's nice.
Okay. All right. Okay, so next on is discuss potential local impacts resulting from the end of Vermont's motel voucher program. So I had suggested this on just because as of June 1st, the vouchers are going away. And there's going to be a couple, nearly a couple hundred people being removed from hotels. And then two weeks later, over 200, almost 300 people being removed. And I just thought it's something we need to address because there's been talk or concerns that it might be an outpouring of people going to different areas, camping out, finding places to, you know, pitch tents and things like that. So, and I've talked to some other towns and they don't have an ordinance that prohibits people from doing that in certain areas. So I don't know if that's something we want to entertain as far as an ordinance, limiting certain areas in town as far as, you know, overnight camping.
Then you'd better watch your step on that one.
And why?
Well, you got a trailer down the street, it was in the street.
What do you mean? I don't get what you're saying.
You've got what?
Going down, down the east street.
A trailer? What do you mean, a camper?
Yeah.
So what's that? I don't get what you're saying.
Well, you gotta watch, how you do this.
Well, I think it's something the board would talk about in ordinance. We're basically, you know, they're talking about people just moving into public parks. And, you know, do we have an ordinance that speaks to that? And can we, you know, prohibit that? So I think that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I.
Didn't you require just like Beaver Pond facility use agreement? Because how long does it take an ordinance to be viable?
Right.
I mean, you're almost like, time-wise, you don't really have time for an ordinance in place.
Well, I think, don't we have Mucia Camp down there?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Beaver Pond requires, you fill out facilities, require approval to camp. I'm just saying, couldn't you incorporate that in, or as a requirement for all public?
All of our public properties.
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, we probably, I did some research into it before the board meeting. The only thing I could find remotely close to camping was in the zoning bylaws and it was loose. So it could be something I could look into and present to the board.
Yeah, we could just add that to the facilities use agreement that just says any camping activity needs to be approved prior.
Well, actually, and it could go further than that. Well, that would be an ordinance though, because we have a facility use policy. Okay, we'll look into it and figure it out here.
And our hands might be tied to some degree depending on what the state decides.
Right, and it also seems like maybe it would be a good idea to touch base with Green Mountain House since they have so much green space and some of us have touched base with them. Because they do have a lot of space where people have historically camped that could impact the quality of light. In practice, particularly schools going to be getting out and, you know.
Kids are going to be out and about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, it could be just a huge impact, my angel to us.
Right. I mean, we do have a lot of secluded places that would be.
Yeah. Yeah. A lot of pullout.
I was listening to Vermont Public Radio today during work and they were talking like there still might be a chance for vouchers to be extended before the budget passes, but yeah, we'll see. We might not want to rely on that.
Right. Okay. So we'll just look into that as far as, okay. All right, let's see, any other business? All right, is there a motion to go out of the Select Board Meeting into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Fiscal year 2024, water rate approval of $545 per unit. Is there a motion to approve this rate?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Is there a credit supervisor's report?
Yeah, I can give you just a really quick one. I've, I figured, figured out on Nemrick how to actually print off an agreement report and you have that in front of you. Some of those have changed since I printed that out. One Gorham Bridge Road had a V-HAP application that was approved. Mullen has a V-HAP application in, which is also on Gorham Bridge Road. So I'll just give that to you once a month. You can track on who's making payments, when they're making payments. There is going to be one error in there and I'll speak towards it at my next report. I, it, the math isn't going to add up if you do the divide by eight trick that we've, we've come to follow. And, and it's because I made the agreement before they were delinquent on the April payment. So it looks like, anyway, it'll, it'll come really close near the end. I'm sure I can work with them to get it paid down. So in, in the grand scheme of things, in, in total, delinquencies are $84,588.55. Two weeks ago, it was $95,639.61. And these are, these are accounts without agreements. You have a lot, and, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, we've got a lot of $1,056.61. So that's just one year without payment. And I've been told sometimes people just come in near the end of the year and pay, pay the whole thing. So hopefully that number comes down near the end of June. And then you've got, and then, I'm sorry, and then the town has four accounts that are left over from, from the, from the previous interest rule. So there, there are accounts like Matthew Trombley, Benham Rogers. These don't accrue interest. And, and I'll just keep those separate. Some of these are out for foreclosure, Dufrane.
So that, that figure down below for those four, for the interest rule, that's not buried into their other figure?
No, that's added on top of it.
Okay. And in this report, the, the one that you printed out, so it shows the agreements? Those that are zero that didn't pay?
Those were agreements where I told them, you know, it was kind of near mid-May or what have you, and I said, just make the first payment June 1st.
Okay.
And, and very few of these had agreements in place already. So you won't see, like when we had that one run a few months ago where we were renewing broken agreements and, and people were paying 50%. A lot of those didn't happen here. They, they didn't have an agreement before, or at least not one on file. And, and they entered into it.
This is great.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fiscal year 2024, sanitary sewer rate approval of $530 per unit. Is there a motion to approve this rate?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and into the Select Board Meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Consumer Confidence Report's been mailed out and they can be, and a copy can also be found online. We, we had a few potential ordinance violations. There was another report of pigs on East Street, right at the bottom of the hill when you're, when you're going away from the library towards Pittsburgh. I contact, I tried to make contact with homeowner, but, but no, no one was there. I, I didn't search the property. I don't have authority to do that, but I didn't, I didn't see any livestock, although it smelled like livestock. So I, the person that complained, I agreed that I would go up there with them and, and speak to the neighbor and maybe we can settle it that way before any kind of notice is sent, official notice. Another meeting is being planned with the Maces on the, well, actually, it's on Thursday. We have, I have a meeting with the Maces to talk about the, the home that was burnt down on West Street. And then I've got good news on, on the East Street fire. Tommy Grace did call me back and say that they, they got everything figured out with the hazardous waste and that he, he indeed can remove it. So hoping that that mess will be cleaned up early June. Not many, but few complaints have come across my desk regarding junk vehicles. The sheriff's department reached out to me and were clear that if, if we want to handle junk vehicles, we, we need to send 30-day notices, just like we do with the grounds maintenance. So if, if there's any reports of them, I can draft up a letter and the board can sign it and forward along, just like we would most of our violations.
Who's paying for the fire damage? The homeowner paying for it or the town?
The homeowner. Okay, so Parks and Recreation, new playground was supposed to get installed Saturday. It got pushed back to today, which actually worked out better because I was around and public works crews were around. I think, it looked done when I, when I drove out of there at 5:00. So mulch should be getting dropped off tomorrow or Wednesday and a grand opening should be towards the end of the week. So we just asked that, or have tape around it, but, you know, it's important that people don't go there and play because if you fall from the top level, you don't have a nice soft padded surface to land on. The, I, I mentioned this at our last Select Board Meeting, the Florence shoulder paving. I don't know if anybody's been up there, but the, the shoulder of the road has, has just about almost given out. I reached out to Wilks for a quote and it came in a little high. And I think some of that has to do with just mobilization. So me, me and Tim spoke, Tim Rice with Wilks spoke, and we're going to wait probably till if they win the bid for paving, summer paving, we'll just throw that into it. It's a class two highway and shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, even if we're awarded the funds, class two highway funds. And the Tri-Town Trail scoping study, an update to this since I printed the report. I do have a copy of the agreement. I've let Stephanie Burke know about it. I've let the other town managers know about it. And very soon, we'll probably start up meetings to, to start the scoping study. Logging, Andy Hutchinson, Kyle and myself are meeting this week to go up on the property to try to strategize a, a new logging road. And lastly, we had three facility use agreements from the library that have been signed. We have the insurance downstairs and in my office. And that's for the PYL field, the Proctor Youth League fields and the pool. And the, and beginning of summer, it's almost here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we, he's talking about the paving. There's other people in the paving business. Should we get some quotes just to see what's going on?
Well, I think he's saying.
He said he didn't.
No, he said if other bids come in. He just said if they get the bid. Right, that's what he said.
I'm watching.
Right? That's what he said.
Well, he said will.
He did say will, but he said if other bids come in. He's waiting to see if they get the bid from the state.
Yeah, honestly, I thought it would be under what triggers the bid process. And since it didn't.
Did anybody do some after that damage over there, the work on there?
Yeah, and that was on the other side of the hill there. All that got washed out.
Right.
But, but this, this side of it, I'd say almost less than a quarter mile past Beaver Pond when you're going up the hill. It's just, it, Tim said that Wilks was the last to pave it and it was a long, long time ago. There's been some cracked ceiling done there, but, you know, if it doesn't get, get done next year, Kyle's worried that plow.
Right, we just go.
They're just going to rip the whole.
All right, Sheriff's Report. Any questions or comments on it? Lot of disputes in here.
That time of year.
Warm weather, we come down. All right, Treasurer's Report.
I'm going to speak for the treasurer here, but I've been keeping track of the balance sheet and, and we knew that some of these accounts would, would, would run over budget. But if you do a comparison report of this year's balance sheet and last year's balance sheet, we're about right on track even. So I'm very confident we're going to end up in black by the end of the year. And my, my department here, our department, I guess, the legislative and administrative, it is overdraft, but it's, it's, like I, like I talked about when we did the budgeting, I had, I had an insurance plan that just had myself on it and Brandy went part-time, so we added her. But it should all come out in the wash at the end.
Okay, any questions? All right, and we have the Foreman's Report. Any questions on that?
Looks good as always.
The only big news is that water samples are submitted online now. So it's actually, makes my job a little bit easier. I don't have to sign it and write a letter and send it to the state, so it's nice.
Is there any other business?
We could share with you, see if there are warm-up Proctor grant for the cheese in the park.
Oh, yes.
For concerts in the park and for fireworks.
Excellent.
Oh, wow, fantastic.
Yeah. So it's very kind of them to support.
Definitely is. I mean, that's big for us too, so.
Yeah.
And we meet tomorrow, so we'll be planning concerts.
Yeah, and I really hope they're proud of the playground too. I think it should be something to be proud of.
Oh, definitely.
Because it looks excellent and it's a good, I think it's.
We couldn't do a lot around here without them.
Yeah.
And then the parade is Monday and all of a sudden.
Yes.
Yeah, I keep forgetting it's already next, it's already Monday. Yeah, so it's 11 this year, because usually it's 10, so it's 11.
Yeah, and flags are going up alongside the road, should be tonight. So if you haven't seen them there, don't get too nervous.
And then the grand opening for the playground will be that day too. And they're having hot dogs over at the rink after the parade, so.
Good deal.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I want to ask a question. Tom Proctor, get COVID money?
Like ARPA money? ARPA money?
I know other towns got COVID money.
ARPA money, yeah.
And what is that money, was being spent?
Yeah, we had meetings on that way back when.
What was it spent on?
It hasn't been spent yet.
We still, we just have, it's split, it's not all in one year?
Yeah, we, we have until 2014 to allocate.
2014.
So we have 20.
We're a little late.
On the town meeting that there was COVID money.
Well, I think it was, it was public knowledge that every town got ARPA money. And we had it on the agenda, we had meetings on it.
How much did we get?
I'd, I'd say 480.
200 something each year for, for two years.
I wish, I wish the taxpayers could sign up what's going on. And you should inform taxpayers what's going on more and more and more.
Well, we had meetings on it and everybody's welcome to come to meetings, you know? You know when the meetings are, we post the agenda, they're the same time, same dates. You know, second and fourth Mondays of the month. same dates, you know, second and fourth Mondays of the month.
Plus there's the website.
And we actually got a list, we had actually got a list of suggestions.
Right, yeah, because we put it out there, people. Which we, that's what we did, we had a big meeting for the community, because most towns did that. They reached out to the community to say, what do you think this money should go to? So we're like, we could have input, it wasn't just, it wasn't our decision, it was, you know.
I know all the other towns did.
Yeah, we did too. Alright. Why do you shake your head now? Are you shaking?
Well, I, I'd like to see this town, you know, move ahead and, and what I'm seeing is not what's happening.
Well, I think we are. And I think it's a handful of people that get involved, so.
Everybody's complaining about these potholes, they're awful this town. You don't have to tell you where they are, just drive down the street, I mean.
I know, people, there's potholes, there's also funding, I mean, we have a budget, we have a highway, you know, we figure out where we need paving. They've tried to fix, it's on his things, he pick, takes care of potholes every week.
We only got twenty-two miles.
I know, it was a huge issue this morning.
Fifty-eight.
It's a huge issue this year though. Alright, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.